All right, I think we're live. All right, everyone, welcome to the January 7th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Can we get started with the roll call?
Acting Chair Adkins.
Present.
Commissioner Ballard.
Present.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Shelby.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the reading of the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehobes people and their successors, the Tleilip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any issues with the minutes?
I think they list you as being present and not present, and I do believe you were decidedly not present.
I do believe so.
For a good reason. So, other than that script, there's no.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I forgot, do we need a roll call vote on minutes? No.
You've been doing consensus.
Okay. Well, hearing no objection, we'll approve the minutes. And we'll move on to reports. Any reports of commissioners? Staff comment?
Good evening. Yorick Stevens, Watched Planning Director. Good evening, Happy New Year. We are in the Everett 2044 Periodic Update Endgame. We've got a short, I think I can count on my fingers how many meetings left of this Planning Commission, one way or the other, for this comprehensive plan periodic update. Been working on it for, I think, about three years. I've got in my hand here a draft schedule for the next couple of months to hopefully get through the last of the elements, bring it all together, and arrive at a recommendation to the City Council for the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations Periodic Update. We've got transportation this evening. I would call that the last of the really major elements that are complicated and impactful. No offense to the couple of other elements that we have coming forward. Things like health and economic development are crucially important, but they're not quite to the level of analysis and impact within the comprehensive planning system. Anticipating that we'll take two meetings to cover transportation, we've got some great background and context for you this evening, and we've got a complete set of goals and policies proposed for your review, and that'll be the focus today. And then we'll dive into some of the more technical aspects anticipated, and then any follow-up that you have in the next meeting on January 21st. One thing that would help us a lot is what information that could help you and what you would need for us to prepare in the next couple of weeks for that January 21st. After that, we've got public facilities and services, economic development, healthy community, and engagement administration and implementation elements, and then bringing it all together, and another check-in on the development regulations that implement it all. We gave a briefing to the City Council Built Environment Committee late December to give them an update on where we were and to share the draft goals and policies and goal alignment sheets that we've gone through on all of the elements that we've done so far to date to keep them informed. And we'll be having a couple of touchpoints in the next couple of weeks with the council, followed by, I think, increasing level of connection there as we move towards a formal adoption process. Still an enormous amount of work, so just because the end date is coming, our goal is absolutely to have this adopted and effective by the end of June. The main reason for that is the middle housing regulations take effect, and we'd rather not deal with a period of different development regulations. Also, we need to get this done. So, working backwards from that end of June puts us at hopefully getting the overall periodic update out of the Planning Commission late this spring. And I think that's achievable on the staff end, so looking forward to that and what comes after. Public outreach period, January and February, so we'll be launching that imminently to share kind of the similar set that we gave to the City Council Built Environment Committee a couple of weeks ago. All of the goals and policies and all of the work that we've done to date, we'll be sharing with the public, the proposed zoning maps, the comprehensive plan map, and all of that. So look for some details on that. As always, everettwa.gov/2044 is the project webpage for this and the place to go for the latest information on scheduling those public events and otherwise. I think that is it for the staff comments this evening unless there are any questions.
Any new commissioners?
Yes, we're interviewing, we will soon. We're interviewing some applicants this month. It might be next week even, so we'll have those soon, yeah.
Any further questions or comments? Do we have anyone signed in for on or offline comment?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and staff. My name is Holly James, and I'm a resident of the City of Everett. I serve as the Snohomish County Coordinator for Standing for Washington, the organization that ran the Initiative 2403, which was approved by Everett voters this fall. The initiative grants legal rights to the Snohomish River and watershed in the City of Everett, and this new law empowers not only Everett residents but also the City of Everett and its agencies, including this commission, to protect our watershed, a vital natural resource for the health of our community. This law gives you the authority to stand up against developers who may push for projects that compromise our environment. It provides the commission with enough critical tool to navigate the balance between urban growth and flood management. Given the ongoing pressure to allow development near the river, this law ensures that any potential impacts on long-term flood resilience are carefully considered. We understand that implementing this law will take time, and we appreciate the complexities involved, and it is important to note that there are numerous stakeholders currently working collaboratively to prioritize the health of our watershed, includes the Department of Natural Resources, which is leading this Snohomish Watershed Resilience Action Plan, and various environmental organizations that are addressing issues such as the PBDE chemicals identified near the Everett Water Pollution Control Facility by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Standing for Washington is committed to supporting the city and the community of Everett in understanding the impacts of this new law. We're excited to help Everett lead the way in environmental stewardship and public health. If you have any questions or would like further information, please don't hesitate to reach out. You can find our contact details on our website, standingforwashington.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comment? All right, and then we don't have anything under new, old business, so we're moving on to new business, election of chair and vice chair. I guess we'll just start off with, do we have any nominations for a chair?
I'll nominate outgoing Chair Chatters for a second term.
Do you want to second that?
You can second it if you'd like.
I would second that.
Do we have any other nominations? All right. Well, I guess I'll close nominations on that, and we'll just vote for her by acclamation. Does that sound good, or do we need to do a roll call?
I think a roll call vote for this one.
Commissioner Adkins.
Commissioner Chatters.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby.
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't realize it was a yes or no. I thought we said the name. Okay, well, I guess we'll move on to vice chair. Any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate you to serve a second term as vice chair unless you don't want to do so.
I would like to do so. Thank you. Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? All right, we'll close nominations for vice chair and proceed to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Adkins.
Do I get to say yes?
I suppose you can. Why not?
I'll say yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Yes.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Shelby.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to the Everett 2044 transportation element. I'll turn it over to staff.
I'll introduce Michael Brick, and I'll just keep going down the line. We've got Tom Hood, City Engineer, and in the audience, in case questions come up for them, we'll let them off the hook. We have Allison Wetzel, Long Range Planning Manager. We have Corey Hurt, City Traffic Engineer, and we have Sabina Oria, Deputy Transit Director for Everett Transit. Michael will take it away.
And now we have a working microphone, so I can continue. I'm Michael Brick. I'm the Operations Engineer in Traffic Engineering at the City of Everett Public Works Department. I am also the Project Manager for the Transportation Element Update to the Comprehensive Plan. I'm here to provide status-to-date information on the transportation element, including a number of pieces. How do I move forward on this?
All right. Give me a moment. I've not seen that one before.
Neither have I. Oh, PowerPoint is temporarily unavailable.
Do you plug it in to upload it, or was it onto the...
I think it was on the cloud that it was pulling it.
Did you have it on like the desktop? Is this it?
I can't wait. That's not it?
No.
Let me grab, I'll do it. Yeah, here, let me slide out of the way. If you guys would like, while we're waiting for the slides, I can start the introduction. All I have are a few bullet points to talk over, so you'll get to see the bullet points after instead of during. The main focus of tonight's briefing is to really bring you up to speed on what the transportation element of the comp plan is, including the context in which we're developing it, both the legal requirements and plans that the City of Everett has that are related. The elements of that transportation element, the pieces of it, are a summary of our existing transportation conditions, both development and transportation network, because they are inextricably linked. The transportation network supports the development, and so they're both summarized. There's then a discussion of the forecasting for both growth in employment and residential development, and then the growth in traffic that that will drive. There will be a, there is a discussion of the facilities and needs that will need to be developed based on that forecast. That's probably the only piece that we're not bringing to you today. A discussion of the resources that are available to make those, to complete those needs. The substantial majority of the resources used for that come from external funding sources, grants and things of that nature. So, we are making our best estimate of what will be available from those grants, but it is not a guarantee of funding, unfortunately. And then the final piece of the transportation element is the development of goals and policies that drive the next 20 years of transportation investment for the city. And we can talk about those when we get to it, but we, every year we revise the goals. This year, there's a heavy emphasis on making sure that all modes are fairly addressed as one of the parts of it, and we're actually, we have somehow neglected to include freight as a goal in accommodating freight, even though we have one of the larger ports on the Puget Sound, so we're rectifying that. Still waiting for my slide deck, so I'm going to move on to my next page, and we will just jump a little ahead when we get there. I don't know if anybody's eyes are good enough to see that, Yorick. So, the transportation element is basically a strategic framework to guide transportation investments for the City of Everett for the next 20 years, and not just our investments, but also how we encourage regional investment on things like capacity on the interstate system, because it does end up having benefits for the City of Everett to not have people diverting from that regional network. The current transportation plan, pardon me?
I think we got the...
Excellent! So...
Just making sure it works okay.
Yes. All right, and that's where I am. Here, so let me, here is the first slide that I went through. I've covered all of these items. These are what we're addressing in the briefing. And, so, the transportation element is really a 20-year long-range picture to get where, how, for how we will accommodate the growth that is projected over the next 20 years in the City of Everett. The current element was adopted in 2015 with a 2035 planning horizon. For the record, I was the Project Manager for that update as well. The new transportation element is going to have a 2044, or has a 2044 planning horizon. The element itself, the pieces of it, are a description of the existing conditions, which includes an identification of deficiencies as well as an overall summary of the city's transportation health. The updating our transportation policies, which guide those transportation investments. Pardon me. Little, little out of stride. I'll get there in about another slide. Reaffirming our transportation policies, which guide those investments, which projects we choose to prioritize, which modes we are investing in, how we're moving forward. Based on the developed travel forecast from the adopted land use model, it identifies and helps prioritize transportation projects and the funding and financial constraints that those projects are developed under, and the constraints that we face in implementing our full project list. The project list is unfinancially constrained, which means if we had all the money in the world, this is what we need to fix things. The prioritization helps us then determine how to use our limited funds to get there. The update to the transportation element and the entire comprehensive plan is actually based on statutory requirements. We are extending the, my notes here, we're extending the planning horizon to 2044 consistent with regional planning requirements. We are responding to new state laws, things like the middle housing that Yorick alluded to there, which then affects the amount of traffic generated through single-family neighborhoods, and working to ensure consistency with countywide planning policies, including other agencies and the county, multi-county planning policies coming from groups like Puget Sound Regional Council. Was also developed a regional growth strategy and consisted with the growth targets of approx, almost 40,000 new homes and more than 75,000 new jobs in Everett in the next 20 years. There are requirements to, for public participation and for environmental review. This particular go-around, there is a particular emphasis on ensuring public participation from all impacted parties, particularly historically underserved groups. And the environmental review looks at both the impacts of actual projects and the impact of traffic congestion on greenhouse gas emissions, which are two related but separate element, environmental elements that are considered. State law governs the growth management, basically, of the region. And to be honest, if you want to read more into the exact details, these are the RCW and the WAC. City of Everett staff are diligently working to ensure compliance. If you would like to know and do additional reading, here are the links, and you are welcome to follow up on that, but we are definitely doing our duty to make sure that we're not missing any of the legal requirements in this update. That's been a significant portion of this update, is making sure we're completely consistent. There's also a climate element that will be updated. It is not due for several years, so that is another piece that will certainly take from this transportation element and the guidance on, specifically on reducing congestion to eliminate greenhouse gases, environmental impacts of expansion of facilities, pardon me. So, there are a lot of existing City of Everett plans that sort of feed into the comprehensive plan and then are driven by the comprehensive plan. The comp plan is a longer, and the transportation element is a longer picture than a lot of these are. So it guides how we would, it guides our Bicycle Master Plan. We currently have a Bicycle Master Plan. It is due to be updated in the next several years. How that update occurs is going to be guided by the goals and policies of this. Similarly, the Transit Development Plan will draw heavily from the goals and policies established here. The city has a Climate Action and Right-of-Way Transition Plan and a Capital Improvement Plan that all feed into the transportation element. These were all, the plan, the projects and goals of those plans are drawn into the transportation element and reflected throughout the element, and then, and then updates will be guided by the element. So it's a sort of, I'm having a hard time coming up with the right term. It's an iterative process. Iterative is the word I was looking for. Okay. And then separately, we are working on a freight access and mobility study. That is a little bit more of a, that's a little bit more of a specific project rather than a overarching picture. It's, it's really focused on the port of Everett and ensuring access rather than citywide. But those pieces all have been fed into our comprehensive plan update. Did it just freeze again? There are also regional plans that are implemented. This would be the next slide, and hopefully it will come up here. One of the big, multi-county planning policies is Vision 2050, which provides policy direction for the regional transportation plan, which in turn lays out the transportation strategies for the entire region, the investments that need to be made to keep our transportation system working.
Is this saved?
Slide seven. Nah, slide seven. Here we go. So, I paused because I was getting to the point where the slide was actually relevant, not just because they were working here. The primary themes from Vision 2050 are increasing housing choice and affordability, opportunity for all, support for a strong economy, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, marine health of the Puget Sound, continued mobility throughout the region, protection of open space, and encouragement of growth in centers and along transit corridors to support that growth in an environmentally sustainable way, and a collaborative effort between all of the local jurisdictions in the region. In support of that, the countywide planning policies for Snohomish County, which consider these Vision 2050 goals, but take them on a county level instead of a multi-county level, were also drawn in and are used to help guide the transportation elements' project development. That includes the regional transportation plan and community transit and Snohomish County's transportation development plans. We're looking at the projects being developed by our neighbors and making sure that the work we're doing is coordinated with the work our neighbors are doing. Because while we all in this room understand that there are very specific legal boundaries for our improvements and our responsibility to the public, crossing a city line is an imaginary line, and we want to make sure that everything works cohesively for the region, not just each city works great by itself, but you can't get between them. This is just a quick summary of the, basically where the regional transportation plan thinks that we should be in 2050, which is not the same year as our current comprehensive plan update, but population increase of more than one and a half million, more than a million new jobs, and we are planning our piece of how to accommodate this growth. It will not all happen in Everett, but a portion has been apportioned to us, and we are attempting to make sure that we do our part to support these performance metrics for the region. I think I had a blurb to say on this one. These are the key metrics of progress in the early part of the regional planning period. Target to increase electric vehicle sales and reduce the carbon footprint of vehicles, reduce the vehicle miles traveled relative to population growth. That's not the same as reducing vehicle miles traveled. That is reducing the vehicle miles each individual person travels within the region, which ultimately, there is no growth without impact, and we're trying to minimize that impact, not fully eliminate it, because that's not always possible. You can see that these other targets here. We're working to improve them. And again, that's as a region, not just the city, but our transportation element policies and goals and our projects support this. So, okay. There were, there are a couple of different pieces to existing, the existing conditions in Everett. One has to do with what's driving traffic, job growth or existing job density and population. And these maps can give you a sense of where employment and residential density are higher. You can specifically see, there's a big purple area here of jobs in the southwest Everett industrial area that is likewise, there's an absolute shortage or shortfall of any residential in that area, because industrial and residential don't blend well. Throughout the rest of the city, there is actually a blending of job growth along our arterial corridors and residential throughout the city. This is the current condition that we've built for today. Currently, the, I will call it out before anybody else notices, these mode splits do not add up to 100%. I don't know why. I actually need to follow up and find out what additional information was missing. There isn't, I doubt that it was 10% telecommute, but it is possible. I need to investigate this, and I will give you guys more of a thorough understanding of it when we come back to the next Planning Commission. This is the information that was provided by our consultants, and I need to follow up. You can still see, though, the substantial bulk of trips are currently being made by private vehicles. Transit and walking each account for about 4% of trips. Bicycles account for about 1% of trips in Everett. And again, this only adds up to about 88%. I don't know where the other 12% are. I find it hard to believe that we have a 12% telecommute mode split. And if that's the case, we should normalize these to trips, because that's a non-trip. But the key takeaway here is transit, bikes, and walking are all viable modes, but collectively, they make up about 10% of the trips, and vehicles make up the bulk, as of today. We have a complete street network. That's a pretty well-built-out street network. Our grid network is not as robust in South Everett as it is in the north end of town, but we do have roads that connect all parcels in the city. Those street alignments are actually essential for all travel modes. Apart from private vehicles, transit relies on vehicle, on the lane capacity. Bicycle lanes currently almost entirely follow roadway alignments, either as lanes or shared-use paths. There are a couple of exceptions, but the substantial majority follow the road alignments. And nearly all of our public pedestrian facilities or sidewalks following road networks. Again, we have a couple of trail alignments through the city, but they do not provide substantial connection the way the street network sidewalks do. We have a roadway classification system that defines everything from local streets to major arterials. And the local streets, we focus, and we have classifications that guide us on how to design those roads. Local streets focus on local access for all modes. That includes walkability, bikeability, safety for all people, all users of those roads. Our arterials need to balance those local access needs with the throughput, both in-city traffic trips and also regional traffic. Folks, ideally, we wouldn't have through traffic that enters and then exits Everett on its way to somewhere else, but we do. And currently, we need to accept that, because when our highway network breaks, we are the only overflow for I-5 in this vicinity. We also have an infrastructure that is built out for freight. It's heavily reliant on the street network. We have freight connections between the Port of Everett and Boeing to the state highway system. The Port of Everett also provides marine and rail access. There are rail cross docks down there, as well as marine vessel unloading, primarily large, odd-shaped items rather than heavy container shipping. The volume is different for the Port of Everett, but we accommodate that. And that includes accommodating a 17-and-a-half-foot-tall load that is moving in about four hours, right past where we are currently sitting, because we are the port that accommodates those weird, large, heavy, awkwardly-sized pieces that Seattle and Tacoma don't want to touch. We also have a very good rail connection with the BNSF mainline, as well as maintenance facilities in Everett. Transit service is provided in Everett by a number of different agencies. Everett Transit provides the bulk of local service within the City of Everett, but community transit and sound transit also provide regional service. Community transit primarily within the county, sound transit to the larger multi-county area. This includes fixed route service, bus rapid transit along arterials, commuter buses and trains, Linklight Rail, which was extended to Linwood last year and is anticipated in about 2041 to reach Everett. That's the most current information that we have. And there are other transit agencies that provide incidental service. They are primarily, we have Island Transit and other north transit agencies that also bring residents from north of Everett to jobs in Everett. There's a fairly robust regional transit network and partnerships between the various agencies to try to provide smooth transfers even between different services. You can see generally here, I've got to look and figure it out. This would be our arterial road network. The gray lines are local streets. The colorful lines represent the arterials in Everett. They cover the entire city. You can see that in the south end, there is not nearly as interconnected of a grid. In north Everett, nearly every road connects through. In south Everett, we have a lot more barriers, like the areas that I'm highlighting here or here, where it's not as convenient. And one of our policies is actually to try to improve that connection, not just for vehicles, but for all modes. To be honest, a vehicle can drive a mile out of its way a lot easier than a bicycle and far easier than a pedestrian can go a mile out of their way on a trip. This is kind of a highlight here of the transit routes that serve the City of Everett as well. Again, they primarily serve our arterials. They connect our industrial and residential centers. For non-motorized travel, there's a big difference between north and south Everett on our sidewalks. In the north end of town, we have a mostly complete network. There are aging facilities. We have a lot of facilities that were built to the standards of the day, but are not current, to current standards for things like wheelchair ramps. In south Everett, we have a lot of just disconnected areas. Much of south Everett was built in unincorporated Snohomish County and then annexed into the city, and it was built to a lower level of public transportation than the City of Everett requires. And so now we are burdened with filling in those gaps that were allowed under county development. The county has actually gotten better about not allowing quite such a low level either, but we have inherited a lot of areas that the county allowed without sidewalks and things that we are having to pick up. Our arterials in a lot of, especially south of 41st, we have long gaps without signalized crossings, and we're working to address those shortfalls, but currently they exist. We have a bicycle network. There are gaps, but most of the network has been built out or is at least planned and in the process of implementation as a part of our bicycle plan. We have been constructing bike lanes, both buffered and not, along our arterials, and using sharrows to notify drivers on low-volume roads to expect pedestrians, expect bicycles in areas where the volume of both is low enough that there isn't a risk to sharing the road. And that's the existing status of our, and here's maps that somewhat show. Again, you can see, most all of north Everett has sidewalks, but they get very sparse, except along our arterials when you get into south Everett. And in fact, some of the arterials don't even have fully-built-out sidewalk networks in south Everett. You can see strides have been made to connect our, these are bicycle networks, the green lines here. Strides have been made to provide connections either along or parallel to our arterials. The arterials were laid out to provide through connections between the dominant residential and employment centers, and we are relying largely on that same network of connections to provide bicycle facilities, although we are improving bicycle safety either through buffered bike lanes or in some instances, a parallel route one block away with an extremely low volume of traffic so that the bicycles are not competing with 35 mile-an-hour vehicle traffic, but are able to still parallel Evergreen Way, say. Because Evergreen does provide a very direct connection between a lot of commercial employment and residential areas. Then, once we figured out our existing network, we had to start making some forecasts about what are we designing for in 2040. We're not just identifying the shortfalls that exist today. We need to identify where we need to invest so that new shortfalls don't occur. I understand that the Planning Commission has heard a fair bit about the various land use alternatives that were considered, and I'm not going to rehash a lot of the information. The dispersed growth alternative was selected, and that was used then to forecast future both growth in terms of residential and employment growth, and that feeds into then traffic growth. Kind of a graphic representation here. This shows the projected household and employment growth, which was fed into a model, which then produces outputs that say for each zone, this is how many trips we think we'll be going in and out of each zone. Modeling is sort of a black box, even to most folks in traffic engineering. I understand enough to know how little I understand. It's an iterative process of looking at, here's how much demand is occurring in each area, which arterial network connections can carry it. Modeling is not street by street. It does look at arterials, but it doesn't look at every street. The Puget Sound Regional Council has a regional model that's not fine enough to use for the City of Everett, so we've had that model refined into smaller zones for the City of Everett. And then each traffic analysis zone, they're analogous to a ZIP code, but a lot smaller. Theoretically, they should be fairly homogeneous, so a residential TAS is primarily the same type of residential. That doesn't always work out. We do the best we can in developing them. And then, basically, the growth information was put in in the model through an iterative process of, let's try putting traffic on the straightest route. Oh, that's busy. Let's reassign to less-busy routes, and it iteratively figures out how to balance that traffic onto our arterial networks. Once that has been completed, some basic analysis is, or it's called post-processing, is done to actually turn those model volumes into intersection volumes, which we can then use to analyze what intersections are going to break down because of this growth. The bottom line out of this is, with the regional project list and the projects that primarily are on our list already, we will be able to keep Everett moving if we can keep them built. There are a few locations along arterials that definitely are projected to have some breakdowns. It's called a level of service failure in engineering jargon, but gridlock is the term that most people use to describe waiting multiple traffic lights to get through an intersection. This project of modeling also helped us identify locations where the projected amount of growth will result in that where we currently don't see it, so that we can get ahead of it with a plan or attempt to use demand management, emphasize other modes. There are multiple ways to address those shortfalls, but this is the way you identify where they'll occur. This is the part that we really aren't bringing to you right now, is the project list. It's developed from the modeling that we did, as well as inputs from the regional transportation plan, city plans and studies, the facility and improvement needs that are identified by the level of service analysis that came from modeling, and then other inputs that will be coming, like Vision Zero Everett, our safety project, the transit long-range plan that will be updated. And again, these are iterative. The transportation element will feed into these elements, which will then feed into the next update to the transportation element. The Bicycle Master Plan is well under implementation and expected to be updated in the next several years as well. We have a lot of funding sources, but most of them are outside of the City of Everett's direct control. We receive a share of the gas tax. We receive state earmarks, transportation funding from state funds. There are federal grants available and state grants available. Each tends to have a very specific goal. We have a lot of projects, so we tend to do well in finding grants. But each grant, and year by year, they will change what their priority is. So it's very hard to predict. In five years, this project will qualify for a specific grant, because the grant conditions may well change between now and then. The funding may increase or decrease to any given grant, and the number of other agencies, and in the federal case, this is nationwide, competing for those same grants, can go up or down significantly. So it's hard to predict the funding that will come from those. Local funding sources are also difficult to thoroughly predict. The city does intake transportation impact fees, which in theory, new development is supposed to pay a portion of the cost to upgrade the network to accommodate that growth. In practice, growth is incredibly variable. I actually had one of our accounting people pull the last 20 years of traffic mitigation monies that we have taken in. And I started looking at it. Historically, the city was at a very low rate, and we have, in the last several years, gone from $900 to about $6,000 per trip that we collect from development. That's a substantial increase. If we see growth in the city, development of new residential and employment the way we have over the last 20 years, we will take in somewhere between $2 and $3 million a year in traffic mitigation funds at our current rate. But that is incredibly variable, and that's looking at a 20-year trend. We've had years that would have been as low as a million or less. We've had years that would have been $6 million at our current rate. And it is directly collected by the city, but it is governed by economic forces that are well outside of our control. Looking at 20 years of data, you can see exactly when the housing crisis happened, because for three years, our traffic mitigation funds bottomed out. We took in very little, because no one was building. And we can predict, we can hope, but we can't guarantee that those funds will be available either. So funding becomes really one of the bugaboo's of getting to where we need to. The final piece that we wanted to talk to you guys about today was really bringing the goals and policies forward. This is awfully small, but you guys had, they had this routed, I believe, correct? Yes. So this is just a, basically a splash of the goal alignment matrix that Planning has prepared to demonstrate how our goals align with the overarching regional goals and with growth management and other statutory requirements. For example, encouraging the efficient multimodal transportation systems that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled. This is our matrix to identify which of our goals meet each of these requirements, and to some extent, how they meet those requirements. The themes of our goals, which were routed also as a part of the packet. The goals and policies, the goals identify what our transportation should, how our network should perform in 2044. The themes of those goals are supporting our growth targets, supporting all travel modes equitably, ensuring economic and geographic equity. That means ensuring that historically underserved communities or groups and historically underserved neighborhoods are receiving equal treatment. A heavy emphasis on safety and sustainability. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, while we were struggling to get the slide deck up, freight and freight mobility is a goal for to get the slide deck up, freight and freight mobility is a goal for the city that had been missing, but given that we have one of the largest ports on the Puget Sound, it's an important, and one of the largest employers in the region that uses very large vehicles to bring very large freight to build even larger airplanes, freight mobility is a really important piece to make sure we consider in our planning. We then developed a whole list of policies that provide direction on how to get to those goals. And the policies are not broken down into individual categories as presented, but they address, and each goal will address, or policy rather, might address multiple of these categories. That's why we didn't break it down quite. It's hard to, it's hard to try to identify which policy and rank them into these categories. But we have policies that address engagement. That includes public engagement on mode selection, on project development, projects that support ongoing land use, that support development, and allowing development to occur in a sustainable way. Project, we have policies that encourage transportation demand management. That encourages people to select modes that have a lower carbon footprint. The use of technology to improve the efficiency of our network. We have goals that specifically focus on each mode, transit vehicle, private vehicle, active transportation, which is a catch-all that covers both bicycling and pedestrians, rolling. Any mode that's not using travel lanes effectively comes into that active transportation. Talking about freight mobility. We have goals for efficient use of our finances, targeting safety. We have goals that are focused on environmental impacts, or rather minimizing environmental impacts. And again, both the impact of an individual project and the impact of the operation of our transportation network as a whole. We have goals that prioritize interagency coordination. Again, both making sure that our project and a county project adjacent are coordinated, but also that the city takes an active role in promoting regional projects that benefit the city. Reducing congestion along I-5, for example, to reduce the amount of traffic using our city streets, to therefore get a better efficiency of our city streets. And also goals to govern how parking, both onsite and on-street, is managed because parking, while you're not actually traveling while you're parked, it's an essential component of the transportation network. The next steps here, we are currently expecting to be back before you guys in two weeks to provide any follow-up that I don't have answers for today. Next month, we will be presenting to the Transportation Advisory Committee again. They have received four updates at this point because transportation is their bailiwick. And I have pretty much summarized everything they heard in four meetings in this presentation in the March to April timeframe, bringing everything together, and then the April to May timeframe, bringing it to council to get adoption ahead of that June deadline that Yorick was talking about earlier. I know that was a lot to digest. I am sure there are questions. I hope that you can remember the ones from earlier because I didn't pause to get through everything. Are there any questions that you guys have for me or for other city staff on this, at
Any comments, even if you don't have a question?
Also hoping the goals and policies would be a good one if you've had a chance to review those and have any thoughts on questions or suggestions.
I did have a question on policy. It's TR 38 under safety. Can you kind of go in a little bit of the weeds on traffic calming? As I understand it, the position of the city previously was, you know, no more speed tables, no more speed humps. Are we backing away from that and going back to we'd like to put speed tables everywhere again?
Yeah. I'm going to defer to Tom Hood, the city engineer, because he's a little bit more involved in the day-to-day safety planning that we've been working on.
Good evening, Commissioners, Tom Hood, city engineer. Yeah, the issue of traffic calming is one that's being undertaken in our safety action plan that we're developing through the Safe Streets for All grant that we received. Corey Hurt, city traffic engineer, is actually leading that effort, and that will be a significant portion of the safety action plan that's being developed now and should be finished around the end of this year. So we do expect, we do expect to see some traffic calming measures, what they look like, where they're applied. All of that has yet to be determined, but we'll have a full public process in which everyone can provide input to develop that plan.
Thank you.
I know you just said that it's going to be a variety. Can you just give me some basic examples of common traffic calming devices?
Sure. They really range from the very rustic things like, I mean, we've seen, not that we would necessarily permit it, everything from hay bales and painted marks on pavement, painted roundabouts, things like that, all the way up to, you know, full-blown roundabouts, speed bumps, speed tables, tabled intersections, things like that, chicanes that people have to chicane through. Those are used primarily, you know, in the bigger cities. But really, I guess my point is that everything is on the table at this point. We're going to take a fresh and hard look at all of it, and, you know, we may even look at empowering neighborhoods to drive a little bit of that, you know, if they can meet, you know, city permit requirements, to try those even on, you know, maybe a trial basis.
Would traffic calming also potentially lead to like pedestrian-only places for, you know, like the downtown areas in some instances where we potentially want to get rid of vehicle traffic other than delivery?
You know, I'm not, I'm not really willing to comment on that at this point. That's really another level that goes beyond the idea of traffic calming.
With regards to Goal TR 9, it seems to me that we might want to change the language there, just since it seems more like a statement rather than necessarily a goal. And for those of you watching online or in the audience, the goal reads, "Intelligent transportation systems optimize the movement of people and vehicles."
I think the intent with that one is that that describes the end state, is that we have employed intelligent transportation systems and that they have optimized or that they do optimize the movement of people and vehicles, but we'll take a look at the wording.
Yeah, I just see like some of the other goals, like Everett has a safe, reliable, well-marked, Everett's public transportation system seamlessly provides, or Everett has safe pedestrian routes, so on and so forth. It just seems to be odd that that seems much more of just a statement about those things, about what it's talking about rather than talking about a goal for Everett.
Sure.
Any further comments or questions? All right, I'll ask one more time, any further comments or questions? All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up online or offline to do public comment?
No comments.
Okay. Well, with that, I think we are adjourned, so thanks for coming and looking forward to our next meeting on the 21st.
Actually, I have one question for the Planning Commission before we go. Thank you. I have one question for the Planning Commission, and that was for our follow-up meeting, was the level of technical information correct? I'm an engineer, and I am guilty of engineering and technical data overload to people. I put a lot of effort into making sure that I did not snow you guys with dozens of charts, graphs, and numbers that don't mean anything. Was the technical level appropriate to you? Because I haven't presented, I've presented this information in great detail to our transportation committee. I want to make sure I'm providing an appropriate level of detail to your group.
I felt like it was an appropriate level. I think there may have been more opportunities to try to guide discussion around some of this stuff, if maybe asking more questions of us to consider, I think would be helpful for just getting us to speak up more.
Okay. What's our topic next time?
Transportation.
Well, I know that. Give me, give me the second layer.
Within transportation.
Yeah, I mean, today we talked about this.
Yes.
What's our topic next time? Because then I can tell you if I feel like it's too technical.
I would, in an ideal world, we will have a project list to bring to you, but I'm not certain that we will have the project details out to that level. Primarily, I would like to discuss goals and policies and getting additional feedback if you guys have, if you take the time over the next week or so to really dig into here and think, not just next year, but in 10 or 20 years, where do we need to get? I'd really like feedback on the goals and policies. Any other element that I presented on as well, but specifically the goals and policies or something that we need public input near one of the bodies that provides that, educated layperson public input on this particular topic. So that would be one thing.
All right.
So I guess one of the, it's always hard to figure out, or it's confusing with the fundings, right? So you guys can't really count on funding. However, we have all these goals and policies, and so trying to understand the priority of where things are going, but usually the feedback is, we don't know where our funding is, so we do everything, and then we hope we get funding here. I just, not, I think there's a question in there. It's just, it's like, I don't know how you guys handle that. It would just drive me nuts if I was trying to manage that. But from, I'm looking at all these policies, and most of them are great. I love them, right? But if you want input from me on like which ones that I think would be more beneficial, I mean, does it matter? Because you won't have funding, so it doesn't really matter which, just trying to figure out how to even respond to that. It's just kind of, you know, I don't know if that makes sense at all, but we kind of do this before. I know you do your annual thing. I've kind of, I beat you up a few times, you know, like, how can you not have a priority list, right? Or everything's a priority, right? And the whole list is great. And I've sort of, I'm good with that. You come in, we're good now. But on the comp plan, we're going forward and like we're looking at all the areas where we're concentrating, you know, homes or units on a intersection, and it looks like there's, you know, traffic fatalities, and there's issues there, and we're putting all in there. But then, you know, do you want to know that that's a concern? I'd like to know how you're going to mitigate for that as a traffic response. I mean, I, you know, my concern is you're going to worry about level of service, and then pedestrian and other models will be kind of secondary, so that would be a concern. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure like in the priority of funding that, how we have emphasis or how I, you know, help you get there. Make any recommendation for that? Sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Commissioner, and you are, you are definitely highlighting one of the biggest challenges we have in the transportation world. You know, there are a lot of grant programs with very specific criteria, funding different modes through different mechanisms, federal, state, local. One of the things that we plan on doing with this transportation element update is creating a form of prioritization. But that prioritization, of course, has to be balanced against those programs where we're seeking funds. We want to put forward the most competitive applications we can, and so we look at each program, what their favored criteria are, and we find a project on our TIP list to fit into that program. At the same time, we have, I mentioned the safety action plan that's underway, developing safety parameters. You know, we use a lot of our local funds for safety projects as well, and we'll continue to do that, but there's also safety programs at the state and federal level as well. And so, you know, we sort of have these categories of projects that you'll see, safety projects, bicycle projects, pedestrian projects, capacity projects. And that's, that's the challenge we have, is balancing all of that. I think that, that the, the policies and the goals, I think if they're encompassing all of those, all of those priorities, that allows us to go after what we can go after and direct our own local funds towards the priorities that make the most sense. And I, you know, I mentioned safety. Safety will be one of the big ones because the, when we're done with this action plan, we will have a project list of locations and countermeasures that we can employ to improve safety, for instance. So I hope that answers your question, kind of.
It continues to make a little more sense. I mean, I feel good that if we're making sure that the goals and the policies now are covering areas of concern that we think should be prioritized, at least that'll be emphasized when you have the funding, and then maybe I'll never get the exact priority, you know, that we could go, you know.
Yeah. But let me throw out one more example, transit-oriented development, TOD zones. That's, those are obvious locations where increasing active transportation connections, transit connections, and things like that make sense. So why not make it a goal, a policy, that we go after those types of funds, we direct some of our local monies to those types of projects, things like that.
Okay. You said you want, this conversation is so I can, we can translate things in layman's terms, which is perfect because I have a neighborhood meeting at the end of the month. I'm going to take everything we talked about today and on the 21st, and I'd like to provide that to the neighborhood. That being said, it is sometimes hard to translate, why are we doing a goal in, you know, 30 seconds? So I will read all these, of course, but if you, you're going to know the ones that you're kind of like, hmm, I want to really talk about this one. Tell us. We'll start with those. I'd much rather hit the ones that you care most about and then also talk the ones that we care most about. It just makes it faster, so some honest feedback.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks. I have been in Everett for decades, grew up here as well. What I have seen that has created a lot of problems in, with Everett traffic, honestly, is regional mobility issues on the interstate system, US 2, I-5, lack of larger connections to move vehicles and prevent cut-through traffic. We see it constantly on Broadway. We saw, you know, earlier this year when, or last year I should say, when 529 had maintenance going on and we lost a lane or two lanes, what it did. So for me, from the most global perspective, is we support regional mobility because it benefits Everett residents specifically. So that would be my starting point. Obviously, there are plenty of others, and I'll let Michael take those away, but.
I was actually just going to say, at this point, I'm more interested in which ones matter to you. I think they're all important. I will definitely go through and look and say, let's look at these specifically and provide that feedback, like sooner than later, I think, within a day. I should be able to, I should be able to go through and flag, these are the ones that I really need feedback on, these ones, whether they make sense or not, this is a statutory requirement, and it's going to be a goal. I can help you guys with that, absolutely. And I really appreciate the input on what helps you guys make, make informed comments and decisions. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Going once, going twice. All right, well, I think we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Thanks, everyone, for coming.